In order. We have a quorum. I'll ask for a approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I'll have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I will recess the regular meeting. And ask for a motion to open the public hearing on the engineered report for annexation. For DD eleven, twenty-four, thirty-four, thirty-seven, forty-nine, and fifty-two.
Motion, motion of open the public hearing.
Can I consider them? I have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is open.
Good morning. My name is John Rosengrin. I'm with Bolton Mate. I'm the lead engineer on this project. With me today is Jacob Hagan. I think several of you have talked with him on the phone. And I've got with us also Alex Patiti. He's a technician with us. He's the one that did the bulk of the computer work on this. We are starting with annexation this morning. Eight four nine is in several districts. You have a map here. Shows the area that we're looking at. The general area is DD eleven. That's everything shown in orange. It was being considered DD eleven. There are several drainage districts within that. Those districts remain independent. They will be third district. But we are looking to add some of those lands. That are in these separate districts in DD eleven to help pay for the main. To start with. We'll look at DD eleven. We were in kind of struggle with all the acre. We ended up with packets for all of the acre. We didn't bring packets for annexation. But I will pass this around after I show everybody. The areas in blue on this map are the areas that we're looking to annex. DD thirteen over here to the west. I map again. There's some areas, DD thirty-four. And DD twenty. DD twenty-four is not in there currently and. I don't have a name on that one, Alex. So there's an area to the east of the district. This is, these are comprised primarily of other drainage districts. They've never been. They've included in state common outlet. You may look back for. DD twenty-four, DD thirty-four. What was the other one there, Alex? Those. Those districts. Will remain separate, but we're looking to drain them into DD eleven. On the regular schedule for regular maintenance because they do use the ditch. We'll talk about how the dollars get spread out later. But those lands are benefited by DD eleven and should be included in the. In the benefited area for the district.
Wanting to go from common outlet then to basically part of the district, you could say, does that change the dollar distribution much?
The, the only thing it would affect is minor. Repair work. Typically, minor repairs are not enough to trigger. Common outlet. So let me explain common outlet. Common outlet is you have a separate drainage district that uses the facilities of another. That, that outletting district has the right to charge repair costs to any districts that use this facility but are not on its schedule. The benefit to the larger district is it limits the number of acres on their schedule or. If there's ever an improvement, it would limit the number of acres that can vote on a remonstrance. So you would not have a vote. In what's done in DD eleven. But you could be charged for it through this common outlet process. On the flip side, the downside for DD eleven is. You really need kind of dollar threshold to make it worthwhile to trigger the process of the common outlet. So you're not going to, you're not going to assess. You know, you have a five thousand dollar repair. And a ten thousand dollar repair. You've got fifteen thousand dollars to put on the schedule. It's not worth it for the time or the money for DD eleven to notify those districts of that minor cost. Costs out a little bit further and makes it less expensive.
What now?
So. In my view, DD eleven's already been improved back in the seventies with that Deer Creek watershed project. I don't see there being any major improvements. There may be peatmeal, lateral sewer there at some point in the future, but it's not going to be a. A large scale upgrade that a remonstration really matters at this point. So for simplicity, for the office, for the board and operating. Getting those lands in the district and just streamline and simplify the process of assessments in the future. We don't have to decide if it's worth a common outlet. We're sure there's a whole separate series of hearings. It, it just operates like any other ditch at that point.
So these people that are on there now have always been on there or did they get added to it?
Yeah, so everybody, everybody that's inside this black line. That's what we call the benefited lands area. It's different than the watershed boundary. Those lands are already in it. So only those lands in blue. Are not in DD eleven right now.
Okay, because originally when that was set up, it was set up for just the farmers that signed up for it. And if you add to it. You're going to be watering out roads and bridges because of flood.
Yeah, so, so we're not adding land. Land is already in the watershed. It's just the, those landowners are not assessed for maintenance of it. It's the only difference. So it's not, it's not bringing in new lands or changing how much water's coming here. That's all remaining exactly the same. It's just. Trying to fix it so that everybody is, is paying a proper share. And a, a side aspect of it is there's currently one schedule for all of this, for everything you see on this map. That's not in another district. So DD thirteen. I get it with my lips. Thirty-seven, thirty-four, twenty-four, fifty-two, like you said, forty-nine, forty-nine, and thirteen. They have their own schedule. Every, and those are two particular areas. Everything else. And, and there's one lateral in here. Thirty-five and sixty-seven, we reclassified. Eight years ago. So that we have a home schedule. Everything else in here, if work is done down here at the south end on any one of these small pile. People up here near the Minnesota border are paying for it. Because of the way it's set up. So part of today, we just split that up. That's a separate process that will start at nine. But that's the ultimate goal is to split this up so that people are paying for what they're using. Not some twenty-five miles away. So. That's the ultimate goal. This is trying to do everything correct. We can argue about how the dollars you split up back to what today is. I know that there's. People that have tiles go different directions. That might affect the annexation. That would affect reclassification of benefits. That's all what this is for. But we are saying that these lands. At the very least, we shed surface water in, and that's one of the benefits of the ditch. And so that's, that's why they're being included. And that's based off of the watershed. Down to the physical ridge in the watershed. So that's DD eleven. DD eleven, we're looking at adding. Nine thousand eight hundred and forty-seven acres.
Now, there is an amendment filed to take off some lands in town.
You want to talk about that now? Let's talk about that one now. Just talking about DD eleven. Let's set that down a little bit. You want to?
Yep. So we had a hearing earlier this year for DD thirteen, which is the lateral. Up by town. And as you guys noticed, when we cleaned that dish out, we cut out all the trees on by the airport. We had a hearing for that this fall. At the time, we found out that there was storm sewer taking water. The, to the west. Out of, out of the district in town. So we removed some parcels in town. So that forty-eight, that, that nine thousand eight hundred acres. Is a little bit less. There's some town parcels that were taken off. As part of that. Then would be also taken off eleven. Same time. Is there anyone here from town? Here, there.
So that was DD eleven. I'm going to rattle all these off. We can really open it up to any of these during this hour. And honestly, if it goes longer, if it goes longer, that's fine. DD thirty-four is another district. That one is over here in the east part. Sections thirty-five, four, and three over here in the east side of the county. We're looking at just annexing some land along the edge. Again, inside the watershed boundary, it does shed some water back. The watershed there is so flat, banks will be tiled either direction. So that's part of the discussion today is if you've got information. We'd love to hear it. We can, we can do adjustments. DD thirty-four, we are looking to annex. One hundred ninety-five point six three acres. DD twenty-four also over in that. East side, north of the ditch here. I wish I had a bigger map. That was poor planning on my part. Sorry about that. DD twenty-four. This is just a, a small corner right by the ditch. Everybody can see that just. One little area there that appears to be piled back to the making. Again, if you've got information relative to that, let me know. Just one. One parcel, seven point three acres. And DD fifty-two. Hope this makes you listen. DD fifty-two. The big system here to the west is DD thirteen. That's what Jacob just talked about. Some of this land here on the storm sewer system being brought out. DD fifty-two lays. Right along the north side of DD thirteen, drains to the ditch, but it's just one lateral near the outlet. That's a separate district. And what we're looking to do there is. Handful of parcels along this west. The west edge here. Surface rain back this way. And you've got tile maps showing it going the other direction. We can fix that, but. Primarily that area along the west edge. And a small area near the outlet being brought in. West edge. This is. DD thirty, DD thirteen branch. One, I can't remember which branch it is. Branch of DD thirteen here that. It's all graded drain back to the west, or to the east. We're looking at. DD fifty, DD fifty-two. One hundred and fifty-six point eight seven acres recommended for annexation. Not finding any other annexation reports. I think that's all of them right now.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine. Sorry. Can I have a copy of that? But I don't have a copy of that. Cause I left it on my desk at my house this morning. Sorry. DD forty-nine is the one I had missed. That's this one down here right at the outlet. And just small areas near that outlet. Looking at aerial photos, it looks like. Potentially happens in there, but the watershed boundary. Again, primarily by the physical ridge elevation based on surface water. And again, that whole area out there is so flat, probably the direction. So I'm not. I'm not opposed to hearing information on. DD forty-nine, one hundred and one point four two acres. Recommended for annexation. Are there any questions or concerns on any of the other? I know I ran through real quick. Like I said, I'm, I'm willing to hear any information you got. Right now, I'd like to keep up to the annexation if you're involved in that. And then we'll deal with. Reclassification purposes or dividing the dollars purposes. I will be on that. But if you've got questions on the annexations or concerns. If you want to come up and look at the map, I know I don't have copies for you. The, the whole, if you want copies, we can get them for you.
Section two and forty-nine, District DD forty-nine.
Sorry, Doc, can I have that?
Yes, I just.
Don't let me walk off with it.
Understanding that we have an outlet. Going into the Deer Creek. I don't know exactly where the outlet goes in there. So I don't know the surface water. Could be the aspect that change on that. So it's this piece here. There's the tile maps.
Okay, so that's all tiled.
It's all going out this corner.
Okay.
So I don't, you know, that'd be the only thing I.
So that's, that's the pool.
That, that's just the. Do you have the same outlet here on this shelf right here?
Back, back into this.
It's going out this way here.
Okay.
Yes, yes. That's this, that's the bottom piece of that. Piece. I, I did email them to you. They should be.
Yeah, I think I'll just.
Just going to be right. Go through there and. That looks like, is that, that's not. Four, forty, but this.
Yeah, it's, it's good. It's going to be actually over forty. It's going to be.
Yeah, this one's, this is more sensitive than this one, right?
Right. And then this is the bottom half of that piece.
Okay.
It's, it's probably all the way up to here.
There it is right there.
Yeah, right. And so it, it actually goes into, there's the drainage ditch. It goes up into this side in here. Why don't you get a picture of that? If you want to take that out.
Now, can I draw on this?
Yes.
Very.
On here. This is an extra neighbor that. He was in section. It was his property. Everything over here. Yours is. Front there. Everything from the east. During the season. Okay, so he's, is he this far side here? Uh, yes. Uh, yes, the eighty and then I think there's. Sixteen, something like that. This. Yeah. This quarter here. Yep, and even have these two. Pieces right there. This is. Divided.
Clericals mixed up easier.
And all this, you think those.
Yes, that pants east.
And this is on this, this part right here. This form stand. Everything here that went into this may, I'm sure, that would, that would be included. But, yeah, I mean, this parcel right here is pretty much.
It looks like. This outlet. So this right by the.
Yeah.
This all goes.
Always south. Yeah, and that's already, it's finally been mapped straight. It's already in the lineup. I guess my, my. Question is. Have we reclassified this? How do you do that? We're already.
Yeah, so, so two separate processes. You're not being brought into eleven, but we'll be reclassifying, we'll be redividing. The dollar amounts and splitting up the laterals. So within eleven. So you also go. You won't be double assessed. You'll be assessed for benefits derived from each facility. If you use, if you only use DD eleven or, or. Let's say half your farm goes to DD eleven and half goes to DD forty-nine. Half your farm will be assessed to eleven, half to forty-nine, relative benefits for each of those. It's, it's not, it's not double assessed. DD forty-nine does receive no benefit from eleven, but it's going to be differently than the calculated over on this side of the watershed. That water travels all the way through that DD eleven system. And this just comes here. And we'll talk about that in the reclass process. But you're not being double assessed. You're being assessed for what you're used for in each of those areas. Hopefully, when they start explaining that, it'll make a little bit more sense.
Maybe in the next meeting. Right, yeah, it looks like this needs to be added a little bit down here and taken a little bit up here. This tile labs go.
This is here.
So we brought three of us as we expected. There would be a crowd of people and they'd be able to. Yeah, it's not nine o'clock yet. So you might have more people show up.
I, I feel. This tile goes.
I think that.
Is there outside of caution? This yellow line is.
Yeah, that's the water going on.
This is my property.
Maybe you answered all the questions.
This whole corners is included. That's, that's all these.
Yeah.
Yeah. Your property has always been on that one. It's always assessed or wasn't on the records. Somebody got, somebody got law.
That'll have forever. That shows, let me find it, fourteen. And see that corner goes that way. That would be in thirty-four.
Correct?
Yes. So it wouldn't be. Now, no longer thirty-four?
No, I guess that will still be in thirty-four. If you assess for benefits to, from eleven. But it's going to be.
Yeah, so it's still in thirty-four.
DD now also be eleven.
So I could be assessed either way.
So. And so you'd be, you'd be assessed for repairs to thirty-four. And we'll get this one to the reclass, but it'll be assessed for repairs to. This lateral of DD eleven and the main down to the outlet, which is not very far. That was only over here. So you'd be assessed for work in this portion of DD eleven. And we'll, we'll get to that in more detail with the nature of it. But that's. Yes, you'll be in eleven, but you're only paying for that, those two portions, is that. I said eleven, I think Franch E actually, Franch E and the. The main ditch for that last three quarters mile.
Basically, what we should do is get our hat mounted for everything that's in, anything that's being annexed and get them to use. You can figure out which way the water is going. So if the water isn't going. Into eleven, we can get it taken off. That's what, basically what it's going to come up to. Cause I have maps in about. Three different locations and three different individuals. So it's going to take them a while to get maps.
Yeah, and we can, we can continue the hearings today. We don't have to make any decisions. This is, this is the first time that anything can be decided. And that's, that's what this is. It's informing you how the process works, how we came up, what we came up with.
Well, I understand that part I came up with, but it's just the fact that if we need to know which direction the water is going, and I have maps through which way the water is going, I should, it's. To my benefit to give you the maps. You'll get that figured out.
Yep, so that we probably will end up continuing the hearings. We'll. We'll continue later. Because then it's, you can't get it back out. Yeah, once it's in, it's, it's in the district forever. We can reduce your assessment to zero, but you'd still pay what. It's a minimum assessment. You have to pay at least five dollars per parcel, even if your assessment is zero. So if you can get it figured out and not annex you, if you couldn't be annexed. We can fix that. If, if you are already in the district, we can't remove you, but we can at least reduce your assessment to five dollars.
Can I ask a question? Well, since I guess we're in the ads. So. You're annexing these parcels into eleven that aren't in there because they're getting benefit from eleven. So. If we make a repair in eleven, the people that are getting annexed are going to get assessed the value.
Yes.
Of a percentage of the repair. One of theirs repaired made in these sections that are being annexed. That I'm in eleven, so I'm not getting any benefit from them up there. So am I getting assessed for their repairs up there then?
No, you're not. Their, their district remains separate, does whatever they need to. And they're all being set up with. DD thirty-seven is getting its own separate schedule to make sure that you're not paying for it out of eleven. It would have its own schedule of just those in thirty-seven or. Fifty-two or forty. All those other districts that are in there. They still exist. They still maintain it. They will have their own schedule to maintain it. It consists, consists of only the landowners. Within that area, going through the same process of determining. How much you benefit. So, and, and that's the, the goal in all of DD eleven is all those facilities. There's, we did a, I was looking on the way here, a hundred and eighteen schedules across everything that's here today. You're not going to pay for repairs in all a hundred and eighteen of those different schedules. You're only paying for the ones that you actually have your water flowing into, to the outlet. So you might be on six or seven of them, depending on where you're at, you know. Lateral F and lateral C of F. And you'd be on the main A. So, you know, you'll be on a handful of them to get your water to the outlet. But you're not on everything else. Spread throughout the district. You're not helping maintain everybody else's stuff.
Whereas right now. Everyone's helping pay for everything. So even if it's a repair three miles from you that you don't. Use at all.
It benefits some of us because we were paying for that before and they weren't.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Sorry.
Everybody was paying.
Yeah, everybody was paying for everything. Yes.
Yeah, not being eleven alone, we had like twelve schedules and then now we have seventy-two. So I've created like sixty some schedules.
Yeah.
But then your assessment might be more in your area.
Right.
You'll pay more where you're at locally because you have a title or a ditch to take care of. So. But then you know your money is going to those you're actually using and actually have invested interest in maintaining as opposed to.
We're making a spare for us up in Iowa now. There's a lot of water that comes out of Minnesota. How can we help bring you that?
That's, it's always been an issue. Did, did you say that there's a watershed in Minnesota, a watershed district? Or.
Uh, we were talking. Shell Rock.
Okay, sorry, no. So.
What is there? There's a dam up there right at the state line, Mike. A or was there?
Line road is, is basically a dam that's got a, it's got certain, certain size covered through.
Yeah, the water still gets.
Minnesota water coming through.
And the tide was still in there. He opened it up and it blew off the side of my basement. It took out my basement stairs, remember, because. It wasn't set up for any more water coming in. And the Army Corps of Engineers made them plug it back up.
So I don't know how it was written, set up when Deer Creek was. Federal project if the state of Minnesota did not participate. Do you know any history on that, Mike?
I do.
Maryland?
They were all asked if they wanted to be in on it. They had to sign up for it and they had to pay for it. If they didn't, then they weren't given access to the.
That's why they kind of did that as a state line.
That's why they built the.
I didn't bring.
But she didn't get them. I mean, they'd probably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're signed. You were the original landlord, but the land has changed hands and you didn't dial in. You just were there, dug it all hooked up. Who's, who's going to stop you? Right? So there's probably stuff that's got hooked up that shouldn't be up there.
Right.
There's a family, Larka family owns a lot of land across the line in Minnesota that has done a lot of tiling into it. And it's really adding into the.
Pressure on it.
But come across.
You're seeing the roads flooding and you're seeing it's going out of its ditches. It's because it wasn't set up for that.
I need, I already have to talk to Jim Hudson on that and see if there's, if, if drainage attorney we use. Because, yeah, there's that invisible line up there. I mean. There's still a boundary, but they should be paying into this. If they're tiled into it, they should be paying their portion too.
Yes, and, and under Iowa law, there's not really a way to do that without the landowners in Minnesota agreeing to it. Either having a drainage district, which I don't. I don't believe they do. So common outlet doesn't cross. Town outlet can't cross the state line. It's only by agreement with the state and the county in Minnesota. the state and the county in Minnesota. Which does work, we're, we're working on one in Kansoo County, not, not us, Tyler Conley from our Algonquin office is doing one in Kansoo County with I don't care what county it is, might, might be, I don't know. But the, the process is, the Iowa drainage district appoints an engineer and the Minnesota drainage district has its own process, appoint an engineer and those two just have to work together. And it's, it's all by agreement, so it's, that's, that's the difficulty with the state line is that Iowa doesn't have authority to reach across. It's only Minnesota allows them to do that, so. It's not an, not an easy situation, um. But if you don't have any Minnesota that's willing to sign up to pitch and start that process and go about that way. But I, I imagine they'd rather just take the free drainage. Of course, we're not allowed to restore.
It was discussed a couple of years ago, to let people to get a petition going and nobody was excited about that, yeah.
Of course, yeah, no, it costs money and nobody, nobody really is looking to spend money, and you mentioned it before, absentee landowners really affect that, that they're they would rather make the money off it than worry about whether or not it's productive, and I assume it's the same in Minnesota, there's a large number absentee landowners that don't necessarily care one way or the other, they just want to make their, making money on their rent.
So there's no recourse for these guys?
Not really. Not, not as far as I know, but it might be worth at least running that by Jim and just seeing what he can come up with, but.
Bigger dam, smaller.
Well, that's right, and.
Slow it down.
And I, I imagine that's why.
Restrictor on five hundred and ten state line road, that's what it was set up for.
Yeah, yeah.
To restrict it out.
I, I imagine that's why the Army Corps got involved, because it was a dispute between two states at that point, and so.
They came in and they said, you have to cap it, you can't be doing that, so they capped it back up.
They decided that what, what it's supposed to be back in the day, and then for some reason it was, uh, still their old site, it was taken out and, uh, expanded on.
I guess.
And that's when the Army Corps of Engineers came in and said, you can't do it, and then they put it back up. If any of you guys want to see my basement, the hole's still there and it's gonna stand, it's gonna be fixed, I'm not kidding. But it's also affecting you guys because it took out two of the roads, one by Chuck Stracher, got to wash that out, you had to replace it. Over by, um, Jerry Olson, you had to replace that bridge over there because too much water was going through it and was taking a lot, and that's what's gonna happen, we keep opening it up. It's not set up for all those.
Sure. Yeah, then your notes though, maybe just from that question by Jim, we can see if there's a process or if there's anything we can do or the landowners can do. Um, because if a land, I don't know if some landowners can do a petition, obviously because you're on your guy, on Iowa's side. But what do we have to do to try to get Minnesota to?
Yeah, and, and I don't know Minnesota process, but if needed, we do have engineers that do Minnesota drainage out of other offices, so we can, we can get that sorted out and figure out what needs to happen.
What needs to happen is it needs to be capped off and go in a different direction, basically.
And the only reason I'm bringing it up is we're paying for those bridges and roads to be fixed, and why should we when it's being caused by them?
Yeah.
And we're gonna keep paying for it to be that, so and all that was designed for so much and.
Well, during this process, reclassification will bring that up, but if you could bring them into, they, they have a larger portion of making it big enough to handle the water too, if that ever happens.
Yeah, yeah, the, the reclassification process tends to push that farther upstream.
If you guys said, we gotta make this bigger, you're gonna pay for it all, or, you know, unless you can get that state, that magic state line to take it here.
Magical, imaginary border.
Yeah, near border, I mean, but it's.
Hoover Dam?
Yeah. Bigger dam. When the road up, another couple. Well, go, go.
I know, I don't want to pay for those repairs.
Three thousand and one, next.
Well, they're getting the benefit off of our infrastructure down here, just like we're trying to, you know.
Right, regardless, if it's big enough to handle water, they're still getting a benefit, yeah, they're actually getting a big benefit.
And since they're, I mean, that water is already flowing through it, so we're at this, it's bottom, it's already that much further bottom.
Absolutely.
You gotta bring their downpour, which can be for you guys.
You gotta take everything above it.
Well, so we'll look into that. Yeah, yeah, and we can, we can talk to Jim even on the way home here, just see if he has any magic bullets, but, um. Are there any other, we've got several modifications for DD forty-nine, is there others? I know you had some tile last, are they part of the annexation or, or just the replac area?
It's part of the annexation, part of the.
So maybe better to just hold off on all of the annexation and allow people that kind to give us the information.
So we're continuing that hearing?
I was, uh, yeah, so all, what was that, five hearings? Forty-nine, fifty-two.
One, two, three, yeah, five for annexation.
Five annexation hearings, so we'll continue all five of those. Um, we would need to just come up with a date and time, there wouldn't be any notice, we just have the date and time today.
What time do you need, Jeff?
Well, my work I have to do, we're still on the corner, plant and corner, we're gonna be a little bit, before I can go, so.
So two weeks?
Two months, baby.
Yeah. We hate to get, we hate to get into planting season, but we're probably getting.
Yeah. So we're beginning in March, yeah, if we go a month, you're, you're right in the eleven, playing hearings, so. We go two months out. So that puts us what?
Maybe early May, in May.
Be ready to.
Early May wouldn't be the best, yeah.
I'd say, you know, late May would be the best possible best, okay, if we have a good spring.
Yeah.
You know, tell them if it's good rain, maybe, I'll say it more than you need to.
Depends on how much water they get.
That's right.
Well, with all the lands that are here, this is the only little changes, I mean, it's not a big deal.
No, yeah, let's, let's get it.
And it isn't like we got, I mean, other than those.
Memorial Day is the twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
So you want to go to the thirtieth? Tuesday the thirtieth, day after Memorial Day? That came far enough out, hopefully, done planting by then?
Something better than us.
But it happened for me, so that.
Do whatever. Yeah.
So the thirtieth at nine thirty?
Yeah. Yeah, put that in your calendar, guys, because we won't send the letters out again, this will be your notification on the calendar today, so if you want to come back and with this. It'll be a meeting just like that, as long as I have my map.
You? Yep.
Or then we can just email them?
Yeah, you just email them, before you leave, get us your email or get our email and we'll.
Or if you want to bring them up to the office here, two hundred and seventy-four.
That might be.
Just bring it with that.
If I make a photocopy mine, just bring them, you know, that way I don't have to really get them back.
Yeah.
Okay, so all, all five annexations are being continued to May thirtieth at nine thirty.
I will make that a motion. Are we doing to continue the hearings?
Is there a second motion? I have a motion, a second to continue the hearings to May thirty, but nine seventy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Owe, that motion carries. I will take a motion to close the public hearing on the annexation part.
So we can beat it.
Or you can just.
We can be great.
Yeah.
I'll take a motion to.
You're reconvening. You can reconvene.
I'll reconvene.
Work on the rules.
Rules. Phil, we can.
We can.
Yeah.
Or nine o'clock.
Till nine o'clock.
Five, I'll.
Recess and reconvene and ask for a motion to open the public hearing on the engineer's report for reclassification of DD eleven, twenty-four, thirty-four, thirty-seven, forty-nine, and fifty-two.
A motion to open a public hearing for those districts.
I have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Owe, motion carries.
Round two.
All right, um, for those of you that are just showing up for the reclassification hearing, my name is John Rosengren, the holding mate, engineering firm. Uh, with me is Jacob Hagan, uh, assisting me, he's done some of the reclass work for, uh, DD thirteen and sort of the other districts, and so he's gonna uh, for the amendment on public land from town of DD eleven. And I got him back out, Kevy, uh, he's technician, he did most of the labor work for us. Uh, he's here to help track the changes that we're making and the adjustments made for the, for the continued hearing later this spring. So we were appointed to reclassify DD eleven, um, and the districts that lay within that, there are several districts within that. Uh, there goes my list, DD forty-nine, if you're forgetting, DD thirty-seven, thirty-four, DD fifty-two, twenty-four, and DD thirteen. All of those are separate drainage districts from DD eleven, they have their own facilities, their own schedule for maintenance, and, and part of today is to set up and approve separate schedules for each of those drainage district. The goal of this reclassification is to, the, the update, the schedule hasn't been fixed since the seventies when all of the work was done and everything is on one schedule currently. Sorry, Val, you corrected me, it was eleven, eleven schedules, right?
Yeah, it was like eleven as well.
Doesn't, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
We, we have split that up and you, um, accounted on the way up here, one hundred and eighteen separate schedules so that you are only paying for those facilities you actually use. Uh, the current method or current schedule leaves it with, I think the big mains are covered in the one, but essentially if you're down here at the south end in section eighteen and work is done up here at the north end near the Minnesota border, you're helping to pay for those maintenance costs. You wouldn't even necessarily know where that high line is at, you're down here at the south end, um. Part of this work is to split that up, so that you're no longer paying yourself to, have nothing to do with your property. So with that process, um, develop all these different schedules, the, there is no prescribed method for classification of Iowa law. It's like the, the engineer and the classification commission to decide what's the best way to, to spread these costs. And, and what's developed over roughly the last fifty years is the use of, of three primary factors right across that watershed. So we start out with defining watershed based on the, the physical surface water boundary. So everything south and west of this orange line naturally wants to flow south and west. Everything north and east is trying to flow to the outlet of DD eleven. Over here and east side of the counter. So everybody that sheds water through that ditch under Iowa law is benefited to some degree. Um, and that'll vary, the, the way that we calculated is a method that, like I said, developed about fifty years ago using, uh, uh, use factor, how much of that ditch are you using, um, if you're, so say for the main, you're down here, there's an outlet. You don't need much of that ditch built, you know, you only used the last mile of it. Somebody up here in section twenty-eight needed that entire wing built to get their outlets, and they've got six miles of ditch, so somebody that's farther upstream has more of their outlet provided, has benefited more than somebody near the outlet, and so the mix factor is higher. We come to the end of that ditch, the next one is proximity, lands that are on that ditch have direct access, it actually provides some drainage, but lands that are down here at the south now have seven, eight miles of ditch to get to that outlet. Their benefit from the, from main A is a lot smaller down here at the south end, because their water has to flow that far to get into it, so. Use will, will push cost to the upper end. Proximity will tend to push cost closer to the ditch, and then the third factor is, um, wetness factor. How wet are your soils, how much do they need drainage relative, relative to your dangers? So we lay all those factors together and in our, our process, we definitely do, uh, we lay them over a nice town there. So, what we, so this map is showing is uh, assessments per acre for main A, it ends right here. No, main A goes all the way to Minnesota line, doesn't it? Main A goes all the way to the Minnesota line, so lands near the outlet are gonna tend to be green, dark green is, is a lower second per acre. As you move upstream, you're getting dark red, and these lands up the other end are gonna have a higher use and are gonna be closer to that line than lands down here to the south, so they're gonna be more red. Uh, you see this orange shading here through the, the west side of the district, that's driven primarily by wetter soils. Uh, those soils would extend through this whole area, but it stands out down here because generally their assessments are reducing as you go down, but because those lands tend to be wetter, here, you can land up on the hills along the edge and in the center there, your assessments are going slightly higher, but your need for drainage is higher. There's several ways you can do that, a lot of different factors we can use, in this case, we set to generally those simple refactors, because to be honest, it's an agricultural watershed, there's not, not a lot of variation across this one. Uh, other parts of the state will, will take into account elevation, how far you are above the ditch, um. We've done, we're working on some levy factors, we're doing some pump factors, none of those really apply to this one, so this one is more more of a straightforward, traditional calculation. The goal is to keep it all anonymous, so we're not picking out who should pay more, we're just putting the factors on there, let the process run and we get the dollars back at the end of these maps. So we actually have these maps for essentially every facility. It, it's hard to show you this year, and so eventually we will set aside most of the warning here to allow you to ask questions, make comments, make adjustments, you know, if there were people have tile information that will modify what we have here. But essentially, this, this hearing is to try to get that information, get it sorted out, we'll go back and make the adjustments and then come back to the later date for continued hearing to, to finalize those numbers. And as I say, that's one, one additional factor that we do include in here, and I don't know if it shows up well on this map. Um, we do have a factor for tiled in versus tiled out and surface in versus surface out. So I, as I said, the surface boundary is how we came up with the border that we show. We do know there are lands that tile out of the district that will still shed some surface water and I'll assume what factor we were using on that, um, point three, if it was, so, so if, if you're tiled out of the district then it's assumed seventy percent of your benefit is with that tile going out, and so your assessment is reduced to thirty percent of whatever you've been was calculated at. If it's the al- alternate, if you're tiled in across the watershed boundary, thirty percent of your benefit goes somewhere else, and so you're only being set seventy percent in the district. Those can be adjusted, those can be discussed, uh, if you've got a extremely heavy pattern system. You probably have more benefit with that tile when you do the surface flow. If it's just a random system where you just have one tile going to the pothole with an intake, probably more of that goes with the surface flow than it does with the tile. Those are the kind of things we want to hear about today, we want to discuss, we can make adjustments, um, there may be some areas that, after we review it with your tile maps, it's totally down. Um, those are some of the things we'll have to kind of discuss, and we've got maps here that, uh, if you want to come up, we can find your partial on your, on the different schedules. Look those over, see what they look like and make adjustments that are needed. One more thing.
There was an adjustment made in town, we do have a part of town that's shown on here, there was an amendment already filed. Removing some of those lands, um, there's a storm, this storm sewer takes it the other direction, we found out like, you know, this fall for friendship for two. Is there any landowners here or county town landowners?
Essentially, that's an amendment would match up to the, what was decided on DD thirteen. And one more, uh, and. Stop coming here right now, so, um, I guess, are there any questions right now generally, and then we can get into more specifics? Like I said, we've got maps here, and that's why Alex, David and I are all here, it's dealing to sit down and deal with, go over your specific area and, and answer those questions, but are there any general questions about the general process we're using, um, any specific concerns before we jump into your property? Anything like that?
And the, the dollar amount shown on the schedule is not the actual number that will be assessed. We just had the use facing out of a hundred thousand or ten thousand, over a million dollars on the main. The actual amount assessed will only be the actual cost, the debt to that ditch should be less than what the schedule is showing.
When are you anticipating on starting the project and doing the assessment?
So there's actually no. So there's actually no project proposed for a ditch cleanout or tile project, there's no tile, there's no project, structure project proposed. Your actual assessments will be probably this fall, if you'll get assessed for the, for the debts that the district currently has, or will be next spring.
I mean, because if we're pushing this maybe for that two months and then by the time we get all that back, maybe we'll do assessments this fall, but if not, it'll be next. The smaller ones I might be able to do.
Uh, yeah, I would as- I would assume next spring, but maybe some of it can be done.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, whatever, there's a natural value.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, you have to be sent out to everybody, so there's a number you send or you're later not writing.
Do we?
Yeah, they just need that round number just to basically for me to like put percentages in the computer easier, so they give me just a round number of ten thousand, it's easier for me to put a percentage in. And then when we have the actual numbers, let's say the bill was twenty-eight thousand. Then I just change that number and then it distributes the percentage evenly to everyone, so.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying, what is the answer, not regardless. If you're saying you haven't finished the project or you don't know that cost.
It's just whatever debt the district has, so like, let's say there was costs for spraying weeds, um, let's say they maybe did a cleanout in one dish or
Request.
This, like the, the reports, the cost of the reports, so like, all that will just be put in and I just pay everyone with stamp warrants. So then eventually I just need to call all the landowners to pay in for that, so I can pay that bill off.
Okay, but when you get the assess, is it only going to be for the district you, you're have or you're set for when you start the project? Or is it gonna be, assessment is gonna be when you start, say like section fifty-nine or something?
Yeah, whenever I have like your exact percentages and I get it all put in my computer, I can do assessments. But if we're already, we're already gonna push this meeting off another two months to get numbers back, because I don't want to assess someone the wrong amount.
So you're, you're, are you asking specifics, like, so, so you're asking like if there was work done in section or
If they were fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, for example, so when a project is done, how long after it's done you assess? You go.
Because you're not gonna do it all at once.
Correct.
Right.
So when does section twenty-eight get assessed? Not when you do fifty-nine, right? So it could be
Right, that's why there's separate schedules.
That's a big project.
Yeah, no, and, and Jackie, I, I wasn't following along, I, I, it makes sense now. So there are different schedules so that when work is done in one of those other laterals, they just set that, that time, but no, you, if you're not in that lateral, you won't be assessed for it.
That's why we're doing this.
Yeah, we're trying to, trying to split it up to make it fair so that you're not paying for those.
Okay, if they're gonna be a scheduled in, so you kind of know when you're gonna get these assessments?
No.
Well, so, so there'll be a, a, a schedule of how they're divided up, but there's no schedule for any work, there's no scheduled work planned. There is no upcoming work as far as anybody in this room knows, somebody may, may.
You'd be notified.
Well, I understand that, but when you come to that decision, you say, okay, here's the project, here's what a concern. Are we going to get a schedule to know when it's gonna get our districts?
Yes, so if a project comes up, yes, you'll get notified that this work is coming, that, there are rules for cost thresholds and things like that, but, but generally, if there's work planned on any land in the district, any facility in the district or districts, um, those landlords get notified based on that schedule, because they'll be the ones on the hook to pay for it. So they'd have a hearing and they can make objections to it and, and put to the project, and then those landlords at the end of that project would pay for it.
If that came to, we would have another meeting similar to this, just with you guys because it's your area. Those guys won't even have to come because they're not a part of it, so we'll talk with you guys, this is approximately what it's gonna cost you, knowing we have the, the payment schedule.
Yeah.
And then you guys can decide if the work needs to be done or not, just, you know, it kind of depends what it is, but there'll always be a meeting before we
do.
spend any of your money. We're, we are good about that, we're very good about that.
Other questions?
By that, you were saying that the people that are closest to the creek are gonna get charged more than the people farther out?
Yes, for, for that facility.
Okay, now, people that got tiled out beyond that, they're actually getting more benefit than what we are because they're pushing their water across us. Why are they not being charged the same amount?
So, so the benefits from the ditch are, are fairly localized, it does provide an outlet for those tile. But when we're looking at it, we're looking at what does, if, if it was just this ditch, what would it do for anybody else, not considering the tile and the ground? It provides them an outlet that they can use, but they have to pay to get to that outlet that's been provided. And so that's why we use that proximity to adjust it down as you move out.
That's not really right because they're pushing all their water across us.
Sure.
And there's the getting drained first, why should we be paying more?
Because a lot of their benefit, the reason they're able to push it is because of that tile, and so they're getting assessed for that tile. Again, it goes back to, if, if you're in a vacuum and you just had that one facility as an outlet, all the district is doing is providing an outlet for that facility, it's not worried about how fast the water drains, that's up to you to decide your tile to get adequate flow through that tile to that ditch. The ditch is just there as a, as an outlet and it does exist. So we're only looking at the benefits derived from that ditch as it exists, not necessarily what's coming into it, because then you get into, okay, this tile is a half inch D C and they, they can push a lot more water, so now we gotta assess that portion of the watershed a bunch more for the ditch, which had nothing to do with that tile in reality. And the one next to it is a quarter, so now you get into reclassifying for every tile that comes in based on capacity and it becomes something that changes constantly and we can never keep up with it. So the way that it's broken down is this ditch is here, it provides somewhere for that water to go. By law, you can hook up as much water to that ditch as you can get to it, so we're gonna assess that ability to move water to all those, those title facilities that come in, because that's where that benefit comes from, moving that water. The ditch is just there to take it, and they're allowed to put in as much water as they can get to it. I, I, I get what you're saying is that you're, you being on the ditch are kind of screwed because they can push the water past you.
That's right, they're getting drained first, but you have less than twenty-one.
Yeah, and, and a lot of that's driven by elevation, which there's not a ton of elevation in this particular watershed, so that's why we didn't do that here, but in other districts, we do account that elevation and try to, try to adjust, to try to adjust for that.
Because we got a lot of surface water coming across one of our farms. Plus the big ass tile, it's taking draining thousands of acres. And we're still paying more.
Okay, I've got property that's close to drainage ditches, some that has a ditch going right through it, and the ditches are, are to some degree overloaded because my intake that are close to the ditch put out water to the point of losing crap before the ditch gets low enough that it'll, it'll, it'll take water, and that's all due to
The water coming, the water coming from that way in, yeah.
And, and then I should be assessed more and, and, because I've got property that's atop, at the top of the drainage, drainage district as well. And I love it because
Yeah, your water goes first and you get that advantage. Yeah.
The ditch didn't exist, you would still get dumped on, it's kind of catch up, that is, the bottom land or the ditches will still be taking all the water from the top land.
Right.
That way.
Well, the water does naturally down the hill, even, even that, that still says it's gonna
Out in our area though, it's still flat.
Yeah.
That, that water. But the whole graph in there, it's coming our way.
Yeah, no, and, and you're right, but if you look at the dollar, and we can look at that in more detail later too, but the, the dollar map, if you look at it, it really is kind of an odd one to me looking at it because there is so much that's in that red and orange color that, because of those, those flat soil.
Red pays more than that.
The, the red pays more. Um, typically what you'll have is, you'll, you'll have those low pockets really fill up and then everything, and it'll be red and orange, but you'll have a lot of upwind that's graining because of those soils, and that's where the adjustment for elevation, but in this case, it, it really is getting spread out. Fairly, even, even though it is dropping off, I mean, you can see it drop off on this map. But it, it drops off a lot slower than a lot of other districts that we've done, just because of those, the amount of wet soils through this whole district.
Is it tracking to, to change the depth of any of the ditches or just, no, just getting clean like they are?
So, the, at, at this point, there's nothing planned, but I doubt that, so, so these ditches and a, a lot of the tile, not all of them, but a lot of them were improved back in the seventies with the Deer Creek project. I would say the likelihood of any improvements is slim to none in the future because that ditch is pretty close to what any modern ditch design is going to be, probably even a little bit more just based on the, uh, the group that designed it and built it. Um, so you're saying it's up to modern design standards, I mean, when you're talking about, people are talking about not being able to get rid of water, I mean, that's, uh, my assumption would be that it's probably not up to design standard. Well, so the design standard is for a, a two-year storm, right? So, not really that, a, a two-year storm would be about three inches, three and a half inches, okay? And if you even get into a little more detail, it's over two days, so three and a half inches over two days, which is not really a big event, right? And we're talking about storms, we see storms semi-regularly of four or five inches.
My question is on the depth, has there been settlement? You know, it goes into the ditches and it's settled and therefore the depth of the ditch, what it originally designed for is not there anymore?
Yes, there, they do need maintenance, all the ditches in county maintenance, uh, this was actually built with sediment basins throughout to, to try to patch that and alleviate that. Um, we haven't done any significant survey, we just study on uh, eleven, sixty-seven, lateral thirty-five and sixty-seven, having the center of the district and here, uh, Chuck Topgrin, one of the men that I remember in that area. So we did a little bit of survey around that, uh, those basins, settling basins are not yet full, the ditch does still have grade even, even though it is accumulating silt. Um. So I don't see any major stuff coming up, but the, but the district is required to keep those in repair, and when they are an issue, they can be cleaned out as a repair. I think there was some talk, we got a couple of deer creek watershed tours out there, and some of the things we're gonna talk about, I think ditch is actually pretty good shape, like you say, but, um, but some of your inlets, you talk, you know, they, they're fifty plus years old, um, so that might be something that people want to be looking at, or we might want to be looking at going forward, but Yeah, and, and all of that would fall under a repair, which is not, yeah, there's no vote, the board has to keep it in repair, and when they know of issues, they, they address those issues. Um, but there's no, there are no planned, not work, major work of any kind, it's just general maintenance stuff that people bring up, so. Other questions?
Do we have a cost breaker, um, just what this study even costs or what did cost?
Yeah, so I highlighted that up, it came out to, so BD eleven was two dollars and ninety cents an acre average.
Is that with, including the annexed acres or the?
Yes.
That's the whole.
Yeah, so that'll come down, that, that will, that's just, but we're only, we're talking about a couple hundred acres, it might come off at thirty-five thousand. Um, if you add up all of them put together, so the smaller ones actually are higher per acre just because that it, it's a lot of the same work, um, so small watersheds, it's a little bit higher, averaging all, it came up to about three bucks an acre, the, the most expensive was, I think, eighteen bucks an acre, but that was only like two hundred acres, so just, just getting it set up it fifteen tiny money to get that set up.
One time assessment?
Maybe the one time assessment, whenever you get the schedules finalized and Val is able to get through all of the, the different particles and everything else. If there are no more general questions, if we wanna, like I said, we've got Alex here and Jacob, I'll be here, we can try to find your, your property on the different maps. If you have a better sense of what, what your properties look like, if you have questions on where tiles go or want changes or things like that. Obviously, anything you've got concerns about on here, let us know, and we can, we can address that, that's kind of what the snick. However long it takes, I guess, we've got till noon. We're done early, we're done early, if people still got questions, we can keep going, so. Yeah, I, I don't have a panic on me, so I'd like to try to limit to the ones you're on, but, but we can try to find all of that you're part of. And Val, if you want to help and try to find stuff too, this could be just labeled at the top.
Right.
And then pack it, so.
Uh, what?
Oh, you got them all, like, I get it.
Yeah, we come back at the end and, and we're continuing to hearing. That's fine, um, yeah, that's, we're gonna continue the same, I would say, uh. Final finish today, we're gonna gather the information, make adjustments, uh, and we'll come back on May thirtieth.
Forty-nine.
Um.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty, what, what does you all, all make the difference, that's fine. Yeah, there's, they are separate processes and we'll stress that they are separate, no, but we'll just do it at the same time because it's all interconnected.
It's eight thirty, nine thirty.
May thirtieth, nine thirty.
For annex and reclass both together.
Yep.
This is the only, you're not getting a letter on.
Why do you have to have so many mains for a ladder? Here's K. Oh, C's right here. We should have put them all out and asked about it before, or?
He did say they were.
Oh, they were. They probably were before we touched them. All right, so you're in, what part of eleven are you just?
Do you know?